Port they're here with us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today I'm actually here talking to you as the acting administrator for the Soil Water Conservation Commission. It's in advance here. There we go. And then is there a echo? We need to give that one minute?
All right. Just turn your volume down. Use your volume control on the iPad itself, not on your keyboard. That still doesn't.
All right. Thumbs up?
Okay, we're there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the slide that you see here represents the interim organization that we've had in place since I became acting administrator. And the way that we've broken down responsibilities there at the agency is all of the technical work, all of the non-support service work is reported up through three existing employees, George Hitz, Loretta Strickland, Bill Lillibridge, and up to myself. And then the support services work has reported up to Sasha Marston, who stepped in and actually assumed a pretty significant role when their senior fiscal person left the agency here a couple of weeks ago. And we do plan to fill that position and try to level set some of Sasha's responsibility there. So when I was a couple of days into the job, the governor's office reached out to me and said that they wanted me to work with the commission to consider merging or combining the two agencies. The news was first announced to the district stakeholders and the public in the commission's June 2025 newsletter, Conservation, the Idaho Water Way. And I'm sorry, the Idaho Way. And this quote that you see on the screen is from that newsletter. During the commission's June 16th meeting, we had our first discussion on how to fulfill the governor's direction to evaluate combining the two agencies. And having discussed this process with the commissioners and other stakeholders, I believe strongly that we needed to contract with a third party or third parties to conduct the evaluation for three important reasons. I think it was important to be taken credibly that we go outside with somebody who didn't have any bias in the process. We needed someone with expertise and stakeholder engagement and organizational evaluation. And we needed someone who had time to do the hard work, recognizing that the other people that might be doing this, myself, commissioners, staff, have their day job to keep doing. So somebody who could just get the work done. And for these reasons, the commission and I contracted with the Langdon Group and Board Works by Ledgerwood to carry out the formal evaluation of merging the two agencies. The Langdon Group has government support expertise and public involvement, partnering, facilitation, and situational assessment. Ray Ledgerwood has extensive experience and expertise with soil and water conservation work nationally and in Idaho. In addition to his expertise in government organization evaluation. Our formal evaluation process started in July and concludes this week with presentations to this body, to the Idaho Association of Soil Water Conservation Districts yesterday and the Idaho Doge Task Force yesterday. And there is a final report that's being published, that has been published, that is the culmination of all of our work. And this timeline just depicts the process that we've been under. It's really been a sprint since July to get to the point that we were ready to make recommendations at the annual conference of the association. And then as the Doge Task Force has become more and more active to present to that body. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Brian Keakley with Langdon Group. He really did a lot of the hard work associated with this, and he's going to talk to you in more detail about the process, the findings, and the recommendations. And then I'll have just a few concluding remarks.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Weaver and members of the board for having me here today.
My forgettable slide.
Yeah. Do you want to talk to that? Are you good?
Good.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'll provide a little bit of background about our company, just so you're aware of what we do and how we became involved. So the Langdon Group is a subsidiary of J U B Engineers. J U B was founded in Napa in 1954. It's the largest engineering firm headquartered in Idaho. The Langdon Group was created in 1997 by J U B as a wholly owned subsidiary focused on public involvement, facilitation, conflict resolution, being a third-party process-focused group. So we have, I'm the executive director of this group. I have held that role for the last five years. I joined the Langdon Group in 2005. We have 20 people on our team. The map you see there on the screen shows all the locations of the J U B offices. And then the dark, dark larger font are the offices where we have Langdon Group staff. So I'm based here in Meridian. We also have a team in Coeur d'Alene. Tracy Ortiz is here with me today. She's in our Coeur d'Alene office and has been supporting me on this project throughout. Okay, so an overview of our process. So as Matt mentioned, we joined, we came on board in the summer with a deadline of essentially this week to complete our work. We had the Idaho Association of Soil Conservation Districts annual meeting yesterday, and then this board meeting today. So we wanted to have our work wrapped up and available to present to those two groups in, I guess, in the course of about four months. So beginning in July, we worked closely with staff at IDWR, the Soil and Water Conservation Commission, and the board itself to identify participants in a situational assessment. So we needed to identify about 50 people that represented a range of interests where we could hold interviews and small group conversations. We facilitated those conversations in August and September, one-on-one, small group, often in person if possible, but often online or over the phone with the time constraints we're under. That led to a full summary of the feedback that we heard. That was provided more broadly to the public so that we could get, allow anybody that had an interest in this conversation, the opportunity to provide input specifically targeting Soil and Water Conservation Commission staff and the different districts, Soil and Water Conservation districts across the state. That, so to do that, we developed an online survey so that they could read the report, provide any additional input that wasn't included in the report. That was open and available over the course of essentially the month of October. We closed it on November 10. On October 28th, we brought 18 individuals that we identified, and we'll provide some detail about who those, who they represented here in a moment. We brought them together to take the input that was received and then kind of take the next step of turning those into recommendations on how this agency merger process could be done successfully. And that produced the report of recommendations by us this month. And then here we are today presenting it to you all. So again, the first step was a situation assessment survey results. So we ended up during the assessment, meeting with 48 participants from 25 organizations occurring in the summer, and that was followed by a survey, which 17 people participated in the survey. So a quick snapshot here of the representative organizations in the assessment. So knowing in one of these assessment processes, we're not going to have the opportunity to get in front of everybody that has an interest in this conversation. So what we attempted to do was to get a cross-section of the interests so that we could at least feel as if we've met some of the interests and given everyone an opportunity for those different interest groups. So those are represented here. Not only, you know, representatives from IDWR and the Soil and Water Conservation Commission, also the board and other state, relevant state agencies that are going to actually, that will have some involvement in this process, including the Idaho State Department of Agriculture, where the Soil and Water Conservation Commission is currently housed. We met with a couple other states that we identified with Ray Ledgerwood that have somewhat of a similar makeup to what's being proposed here in Idaho. We whittled that down to Montana and Minnesota as having some close connection to how this structure might, might appear and met with representatives from those organizations to get an understanding of how that's being done effectively or not. And also the Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is a federal agency that plays a key role in these, in these types of projects. Another key participant is that of the various districts. So there's 50 districts, I believe, across the state in individual soil and water conservation districts. Those are divided up into six divisions. Those divisions, you know, fit the Idaho map, similar to every other, you know, state agency. So we ensured that we met with districts from each one of those divisions to get some good geographic representation on the ground from the people that are working in the fields every day. Okay, so again, then after that was completed, we provided the opportunity both by directly sharing the report and a survey with everybody that participated in the assessment as well as, as Matt and George from the Soil and Water Conservation Commission went out on a roadshow essentially and visited all the different division meetings in October. So each one of those six divisions holds a fall meeting. What George and/or Matt attended each one of those to encourage those folks to access the survey and provide their feedback. So I'll walk through the themes that came out of this. So the way that we do these assessments is we have these conversations because what we're doing is we want to, we want them to provide feedback and input without any concern that we're going to attach their name or their organization to the comments that they provide us. So we pull all that information, all these notes from all these different conversations, and then, and then break those out into themes. We identified themes where there was common interest, common ground, and potential opportunities for collaboration and categorize those. And that's how the assessment summary is broken up. So I'll walk through the different themes that emerged through that conversation, through, through that process from those conversations. And this is just provided alphabetically, not in any order of frequency or importance. So the first theme that emerged was agency perceptions. There's a kind of a strong interest from almost all conversations that recognition that the Idaho Department of Water Resources has a predominantly regulatory role, whereas the Soil and Water Conservation Commission is in a non-regulatory voluntary function. So a lot of questions and concerns about how that separation is maintained should the merger go forward. Conversations around the appropriate state agencies for merger. IDWR is the agency that the governor's recommended, but we wanted to open the conversation up to determine, is that the right choice? Are there other appropriate places to house this, this agency? Being knowing that the way the state government's set up, there's not room for them to, to stand alone. They, they do need a nest within somebody based on kind of the limitations of agencies that the state allows. So predominantly IDWR, there was synergy found as being what made the most sense with some interest still and it's remaining in agriculture. Another category was information and outreach. So we heard, you know, if this were to go forward, we wanted to get good insight from, from folks, folks that we talked to about how the message gets shared to the broader public, to the people that are tied to this conversation. Both what's the, what's their preferred method, whether the types of questions they would want answers to? If this were to move forward, what items would be preserved from the Soil and Water Conservation Commission that would carry over to IDWR and what, what areas you'd want to avoid? Organizational structure was a key theme that there was a lot of this conversation around, both in how this looks in statute, if the change were to occur. What is the role now of the Soil and Water Conservation Commission Board? And how does the Soil and Water Conservation Commission staff fold in under a new org structure? Potential gains. So a lot of conversation around, well, if this were to occur, what are the opportunities for the Soil and Water Conservation Commission under a new arrangement? And then breaking that down into subcategories further. Improve communication with the public. The CREP program, which maybe some of you are familiar with, is an opportunity to improve how that functions. Data and knowledge sharing, opportunity to pool data. There's a lot of data that both agencies are collecting, so that could be put into a clearinghouse. Funding, is there opportunity to improve the funding to Soil and Water Conservation Commission projects? Opportunity to consolidate office and equipment. Improve political positioning for the Soil and Water Conservation Commission as part of a larger organization. Is there more opportunity to recruit and retain staff? One issue the Soil and Water Conservation Commission faces is with a smaller org chart, people within that group don't have places to go if they want to get promoted because there's only so many, so many positions available. So as part of a larger, or larger organization is a room to move into other areas of practice. Then we took all that information and held a workshop on October 28th. So you can see the participating organizations that played a role in that. We needed to make sure that we had all these interests represented, but we didn't want to fill the room because we needed, we really wanted this to be a collaborative conversation and be able to manage that. So this was an all-day workshop that we held at our office, the J U B office in Meridian. And it was facilitated by myself, Tracy, and another member of our staff. What we did is spend the first part of the day breaking everyone into smaller groups and taking them through an exercise where they identified what they wanted to, what they could potentially achieve through the merger. What could they avoid? What would they want to avoid? What would you want to preserve through a merger? And what would you want to eliminate that process? We used all that input to have good discussion around what we heard and what we also heard through the assessment and survey process. And then from that, from some small groups emerged. So it was clear that there was interest in having deeper conversations and developing recommendations around these three areas. Actionable goals. So what from all that input could you actually put into action? What would the new organizational structure look like to be effective? And what is the approach to taking this through the legislature? So now I'll walk through the recommendations that we came up with throughout this process. I guess I'll, and I guess pause there if there's any questions about the process and what led us to this point.
Board members, any questions to this point? I, I think we're good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the first recommendation is, so if this merger were to occur, the recommendation that Idaho Department of Water Resources is indeed the appropriate state agency to merge with for these reasons. IDWR has a technical capacity to support the Soil and Water Conservation Commission. There's a focus on water issues where the greatest synergy exists among the Soil and Water Conservation Commission interests. There's a number of overlapping services that are appropriate for consolidation shown here. And these are more in the support service categories. There's the need to provide career growth opportunities for engineers and training. So this is one thing that it came up as a clear opportunity in this is that the Idaho Department of Water Resources has a number of engineers in training, so EITs they're called. To become a licensed engineer, an EIT needs to get design work under their belt. IDWR doesn't provide the opportunity for design work. So, but the Soil and Water Conservation Commission does. So there is now, it does create an opportunity for IDWR EITs to now get their, become a professional engineer and stay within their, in their job, not have to leave and go to the private sector or another agency to achieve that. Conversely, the Soil and Water Conservation Commission has one engineer that does all its, all the work for the state, Bill Lillibridge, who's up north. He travels a lot. So having the resources of the IDWR engineers to support his work would also be a tremendous benefit. Broader career growth opportunities for Soil and Water Conservation Commission staff, mentioned that previously, but with a broader organizational structure, people that can actually stay in the agency potentially longer. Overlap with Soil and Water Conservation Commission process. So the, there's a number of areas of work where both agencies are actively involved. CREP, TMDL work, stream restorations, permitting. So there's an opportunity to potentially streamline and expedite some of these permitting processes. Data overlaps. There's a lot of shared data, so that could all be combined and provide a clearinghouse where all that could be available in one place. The recommended organizational structure of the merged agencies. So the recommended structure is that the IDWR director manages a new position, the Soil and Water Conservation Commission Bureau Chief as a direct report. The bureau chief oversees the coordination of daily activities under the direction of the Soil and Water Conservation Commissioners, which was similar to the relationship that existed previously with the Soil and Water Conservation Commission Administrator. The selection of that bureau chief would be significantly informed by the commissioners as participants in the interview panel. Commissioner oversight includes responsibility and guidance over all programs under the Soil and Water Conservation Commission, including the engineering staff, the WACPA funding, the CREP program, and all field staff. Within this structure, Soil and Water Conservation Commission retains all non-support service full-time equivalent positions. And then the support service, support services, IT, human resources, finance and accountable payable, those would be evaluated for inclusion within the counterpart departments within IDWR. So here's a visual of what that org structure looks like. The top half of that org structure on the left shows the direct hard line from the director to the Soil and Water Conservation Commission Bureau, Soil and Water Conservation Bureau Chief, and then a soft reporting structure to Soil and Water Conservation Commission. Matt, is there anything else you want to share here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The one thing I would say is kind of the top end of this was what came out of that workshop. Big picture, how would this integrate into the agency? The lower half there is kind of staff, myself, working through, well, what would it really look like? How would it really be orged if it were a bureau within? This is still conceptual. It was pointed out when we presented yesterday that there's a couple of positions that aren't depicted here. This wasn't meant to be comprehensive and final, kind of an amalgamation of the work that came out of the workshop and starting to put meat on the bones of what a real bureau might look like.
And the map on the right just gives you an idea of those six divisions that we mentioned and how maybe those those different divisions might report to different departments within the new org structure or coordinate with that report too. Okay, so regarding the Soil and Water Conservation Commission Board, it's recommended that it functions in statute as it does today. Nominated by local conservation district divisions for consideration by the governor. Conservation district commissioners are chosen by the public through a vote in local elections. The chairman of the board would serve in an ex officio position on this board, serve as a liaison between the two government bodies. And the IDWR director would serve as an ex officio non-voting commissioner of Soil and Water Conservation Commission. And the same why that the IDWR director plays this role on this board. So it's critical to preserve the non-regulatory voluntary independence of the Soil and Water Conservation Commission in reality and perception. So the following considerations are recommended to achieve this. So I'll walk through these, but these are some of the key pieces that I think are important to carry over into the, the way that's this, this new division or, or component of IDWR functions. Protecting the budget for the benefit of all local conservation districts matched on or through district operations. Preserve connections and relationships, relationships with NRCS and the local conservation districts through shared offices where financially feasible. A key term used in these, in this world is the three-legged stool, which means the state agency, the NRCS, the federal agency, and the local conservation districts are all necessary to keep the stool up and to continue providing this service for the state. So currently, a number of Soil and Water Conservation Commission staff that are in the field are housed within the agent, the same office as NRCS and the districts. So they would like to continue, see that where feasible, continue to maintain those relationships and maintain those even standings on the legs of the stool. Maintain all branding and all forms. So this comes right down to the email address and the logo on the side of the truck. There's a lot of in value, it's believed, to maintain that and not change that to IDWR. Again, to ensure that there's a non-regulatory first position of the people that are coming to visit out, you know, out in the field. Preserve independent Soil and Water Conservation Commission agency reporting to germane committees in the legislature. Retain the seasoned, experienced staff that have brought, that buy into the agency mission as part of the agriculture community. So a lot of key relationships that have been established and are important to the success. So keep bringing those people forward. Keep the funding decisions with the Soil and Water Conservation Commission. Do not turn control over that to this board. Formalize a conservation partnership framework or MOU that documents how these agencies will coordinate non-regulatory programs. Frameworks should ensure there's resource sharing never crosses into enforcement or policy interference. So just formalizing some of these understandings of different, different sides of the house, so to speak. Recognize the board mission of the Soil and Water Conservation Commission and conservation districts beyond water resources to include but not limited to issues involving wildlife habitat, rangeland, forest land, cropland, urban environments, and others as described in this report. So that's one, I guess, one, one concern from a number of people in this community is that not everything is all about water. There's a lot of work that the Soil and Water Conservation Commission does. That's not always water-related. So ensuring that that continues forward and is still part of their mission. So the changes to, in Idaho code that are recommended to ensure this all stays kind of in the spirit that we've discussed is essentially just moving this sec, the section that Soil and Water Conservation Commission is currently, currently written under the Idaho State Department of Agriculture into IDWR. And then ensuring that that non-regulatory language is, is, it's maintained in that, in code as it is today. And then effective communication. So we've got a lot of good information about how this should be communicated out. Preferred method for sharing information through frequent emails and through FAQs. And we provided in the report a number of FAQ FAQs that would be helpful for folks to understand what's going on. The next one, sort of seizing on the opportunity of this merger to communicate the value of the Soil and Water Conservation Commission and its history, which has its roots in the Dust Bowl. So kind of helping, helping Idahoans understand what, what this is and, and why it's valuable to the state. And improving communication with the public and the legislature by developing new communication officer position in contract or hired by the agencies to help push these messaging, push this messaging and communicate this information. So that wraps up the reports. So this, this link here and that QR code will take you to the full report. We have copies. Tracy can distribute of the, this recommendations chapter. We didn't want to provide the full report. It gets a little long, but the full report includes that summary, the assessment, survey, and all the work that we did. And then we can have questions or Matt, if you want to kind of pick up where we're at today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Matt, perhaps let's, let's do a check in, any questions from board members right now? Okay, we're good.
Thanks. First of all, I just want to say thank you. There are some people here that have participated in this process throughout. Representative, or I'm sorry, Board Member Van Stone and Cole Hanson, Brian Patton, Ethan Geisler with the department. You know, there Sasha Marston certainly with the department. We have had a voice in this process, both reflecting the fact that if this were to go forward, there certainly would be impacts on the Department of Water Resources and on the Idaho Water Resource Board, just because we would be having to accommodate those new relationships. And so thank you for the participation. The second thing I would say is this is not the department's work product. This is the work product that came out of these efforts led by Langen Group and Bryant Keithley. And so you guys have a very familiar understanding of how the department works and how that relationship exists with the board that wasn't necessarily the case with all of the people that participated in it. So there are recommendations here that when we have our department and board hat on, we might say, well, I'm not sure I totally understand what that is getting at, but just to me, that's indicative of all of the stakeholders that you know, participated in this evaluation process and that theme that came out time and time again through this process of yes, we think the Department of Water Resources is the best agency to merge with. You know, that was a key finding in this, but we are leery of the fact that Department of Water Resources is a regulatory entity with a capital R who makes headlines in this state for enforcement and curtailment. And we don't want that reputation to chill the work that we do because we're often working to achieve good conservation objectives and projects with the same people that are being subject to those enforcements or curtailment notices by the department. So you know, that, that, that's really important to the folks in the 50 conservation districts across the state. There was a slide there earlier kind of indicating that we're not doing this evaluation in a vacuum. We have the Idaho Doge Task Force that has been convened, I think since July, meeting monthly, has published some documentations that have acknowledged that this is being evaluated and that they might support merging these two agencies. I actually presented to the Idaho Doge yesterday, I was one of 10 agencies that were presenting on various considerations of combining and/or eliminating state agencies. And some of those presentations, like the combination of Office of Species Conservation and Office of Energy Mineral Resources, had a long, robust discussion. At the end of my presentation, there was very little comment and discussion. The one substantive question we got was through this process, did anyone identify another agency that would be a better fit for the Soil and Water Conservation Commission? And I think what you recognize is that the commission has been with Ag in the past, it has been with Lands in the past. Those relationships haven't continued. They haven't, I guess, been as fruitful or as energetic as people might have hoped. Obviously, the Department of Environmental Quality would be another agency that would be worthy of strong consideration, but they're probably the only other natural resource regulatory agency that the people fear more than the Department of Water Resources. So kind of coming through that process, it was, yeah, Department of Water Resources is a good fit. A lot of the focus of a lot of the districts in the state are around water and, and, and some of the conservation missions that you specifically, the board have and that the department has in helping you carry out that work. So with this evaluation process now over, we are sending this recommendations report to the Division of Financial Management, Division of Human Resources, the Governor's Office, it will be going, it went to the Idaho Doge Task Force yesterday. It, I anticipate that in December I'll be called to give a similar presentation to the legislative leadership as we go into the next session. But what I've been pointing out is the next steps aren't for the commission to decide or for me to decide. It's really going to be how does the governor want to go forward or how does the legislature want to go forward? And depending on who decides to lead that process, it could be a very different process. And one thing that I guess I'm preparing for is that they turn around and say, okay, Director, you and the commission are going to go forward during the next calendar year through the executive agency legislative process and the budgeting process, and you're going to do the hard work of ironing out all the details, merging the two agencies, working through Title 22, Chapter 27, working through Title 42, Chapter 17 and 18 and wherever else we need to do, and then submit a combined budget. One question that came out yesterday at the conference was, tell us what the dollar savings is. If this is all about saving general fund, how much general fund are we saving? And my response is, I don't know, I haven't put a number to that yet. Because if I'm going to do this, I've been asked to do this, I need to do it in a collaborative way. And if I go out there with an org chart and the dollar savings, it all seems predetermined in my mind in a way that I don't think it is and then it's not appropriate to be. So if we continue to go down evaluating this merger, which I think we will, I think that Doge Task Force will be supportive of this. We got a resolution late last night out of the Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts supporting this merger with some sideboards in place that came out of that workshop and that you saw reflected in the recommendations. But it would be at that point, I think, that we would start to say, what will the actual general fund savings be? What would a savings and FTE count at the commission look like? What I said yesterday is I think the savings will be modest. The general fund ongoing appropriation for Soil and Water Conservation Commission is $3.68 million. So if we save a couple of FTEs, which seems likely, the administrator would become, a lot of those duties would be absorbed by the director. I think there's an opportunity to synergize our support services. You know, so you're talking about a couple of hundred thousand dollar savings there in personnel, perhaps another couple hundred thousand dollar savings in operational expenses. So I do think it would be a modest savings if we intend to realize all of the recommendations that are in this report and ensure that after this merger, we haven't had a diminishment in services or programs or good work that's accomplished by either the agencies. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think Brian and I are ready for any questions if you have them.
Okay, board members, any questions? Or Brian or Matt?
Yesterday we had an hour plus of questions, so.
Brian.
Mr. Chairman, Matt, I talked to about at least three of the supervisors at the meeting yesterday and they thought it was pretty well received. Where a couple of months ago, I didn't get that impression so much at the meeting you were at in my balls. Did you feel like it was?
Yes, so Brian indicated that I attended some of the division meetings and I was up with Board Member Van Stone at the Division One meeting in Plummer. I zoomed the Division Six meeting, which was over in your neck of the woods, Mr. Chairman, and I participated in the Division Four meeting in Kimberly. And at least in a couple of those, I was told ahead of time, you're not going to get a warm welcome here. You know, you need to be ready for some hard questions and some conflict. And I did not find that to be the case. We had really good discussions, they had really good questions. They had concerns that I don't think are going to be part of anything that comes out of this process. And one of those concerns, just being candid with you, is that the commission goes away and the board steps in and does all of the work for the commission. And for my part, I don't see how that's possible because they have expertise in foreign land, forest land, cropland, rangeland that doesn't, doesn't exist with this board. Sure, there's overlap in the water resource management side of it, but there's a whole lot of other work that they do. They, you know, Dale can speak to this better than I can. They provide over 150,000 seedlings in northern Idaho to reforest private and public land. They run a seed bank to support various types of planting across the state. There is a lot of soil work, no-till work, cropping work that they do, a lot of education that they do. They do an amazing amount of education, both to school-aged folks and active farmers and growers and ranchers. So there's too much work there, I think, for that commission not to exist into the future in the way that it does.
Well, I, I think I can speak for the board in telling you to please lay their concerns that this board is interested in taking on any more responsibility. We, we have no desire to dabble in, in the affairs of the, of the commission. They can do their thing and we'll continue to do ours. If there's a way we could collaborate with them on occasion to do a better job, we'd be happy to explore that with them. But we, I don't think there's any intention on our part to come in and grab any of their programs or take over any of their responsibilities. And then a couple, Pat and then, then Dale.
Brian, on one of your slides, there was a reference to sharing of materials and stuff in non-regulatory situations. And my question to you, because I'm completely ignorant, is what exactly regulatory word does conservation do?
I guess short answer is, thank you, thank you for that, none. You know, it's, they, they are a completely voluntary, non-regulatory body. So that's, I think, when you talk to people, when you talk to people in the field, you know, the farmers and the producers, when you talk to the districts, when you talk to folks in Soil and Water Conservation Commission. I think that's probably the largest overarching concern they have with this is that they want to be able to walk, they want to be able to go visit a farmer, help them come collaborate and come up with solutions and not have that farmer concern that they're going to be looking for violations, to put it bluntly.
Okay, Dale.
Matt, do they have a timeline of when this merger, if it does take place, will be completed?
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Van Stone, again, that really depends on how we take the next step here. Does the governor say, go forward and do this, but give that assignment to his staff, DFM, DHR to go have this happen? Does the governor say, I'm want to own this and move it forward, Director, you're going to do this? Or does the legislature, who is going to get a presentation on this, at least in their Jermaine Committees in the next session, who is very much aware of it, now that the Doge Task Force has this on its list of low-hanging fruit? And I would envision is going to make some type of recommendation to the legislative body. So is it the case that the legislature is going to move this process forward? During the workshop, one of the groups that met really much talked about, if the legislature were to move this forward, what would that look like in a way that we get a measured and well-considered outcome? And we had Mark Harris, Senator Mark Harris in leadership in the Senate and Representative Stephen Miller, who's co-chair, co-Vice Chair on JFAC participate. And it was interesting because they were really quiet until they weren't. And then they were really loud and engaged in the process and they were really much formulating. If this went forward in the legislature, what would that process look like? Some of the things I remember them discussing is present to legislative leadership so that this gets teed up on a timeline early enough in the session that we can take good action and work towards a joint resolution that would come out of the legislature that would support a more measured look at this and moving forward over the following fiscal year. So very much kind of in line of what that, what I would think would be a reasonable way to move forward with this is that look to have a fiscal year 2028 budget if we combine the agencies that represents that. Look to have a comprehensive bill brought during the 2027 legislative session that has gone in and evaluated all of the parts of statute that would need to be addressed to make sure that we realize those recommendations and that, as we all know, can occur to legislative process, we minimize the unintended consequences.
Thank you. Okay, Mark, you have a question?
I do, but was there a question over here before me?
Well, I, I, I think I've got them both, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director, the organizational chart, as I recall, it looked to be on top, there was lateral movement, but there wasn't clearly a head in that chart to me. So did I perceive that chart incorrectly or is there lateral responsibility across the top? The commission and the direct.
So the way I read these org charts is that the solid line represents the, the in-state code required official line of supervision. So the Bureau Chief has that solid line to the director because it's the director or at least someone in leadership in the organization, it would be the supervisor that's doing the evaluation, that's checking all of those boxes that are required to be checked for state employees. The dash line recognizes that there is also input coming from that entity to that person. And one thing that I've messaged through this process, well, two things. One is, yes, the department's regulatory, but we're also very much non-regulatory. And the bureaus that you work with, planning and projects and technical services, they are not anyone's idea of a regulatory body doing regulatory work and they are supporting you and you do not do regulatory work. And we've had a strong and vital and growing relationship as long as I've been at the department. And could we mirror that relationship with the commission? And that was really my idea and I see myself as a peer to the board. We each have our separate duties and responsibilities set forth in statute. There's not anyone ahead of the other. There's not even a first among equals relationship here. We are truly equals and could the commission be on that same platform? And so I did intend for that, or at least what came out of that workshop was that that is an equal footing there between the commission and the director. Did that answer your question?
Well, just to follow up to that, maybe Matt, u- u- under the present constitution of the commission, i- isn't it just the, the commissioners go directly to the administrator?
Yes, and, and they actually are the ones that appoint in statute now the administrator. And so in my mind, if we have details yet to iron out, that is an example of a detail that needs to be ironed out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Join.
One, one thing that I'd like to mention that I heard during the conversations was that the Soil and Water Conservation District structure is very bottom up. They start from the field and drive their messages up to versus, they were concerned about being led from a top-down org chart such as this. And I'm not sure how to address that or.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Cole Hanson, one thing that I've learned in my six months with the commission is that when Delwyn Travz came into that role of administrator, there was a change in philosophy at the commission and it was very much a districts-first philosophy. We are here to serve the districts, not to what kingdom build or do anything else that you might have with an agency-first focus. And that mentality, I think, has been very well received by the districts, as you might imagine. I think it's been absorbed and adopted by the commission. And I think they certainly have had a really positive and constructive four years under Delwyn's leadership there, having come from, I think, a pretty tumultuous history prior to that. And so I think that comment that you were hearing, kind of in my mind, parallels that sentiment that it's districts first, we're here to support the districts and that means the information is coming from the districts up through the organization. And most of the commissioners are supervisors on various water conservation commissions.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Mr. Chairman and Board Member Cole Hanson, I, I mentioned the three-legged stool. I think that's another key component that ties into what you're sharing there is the districts, the state agency and NRCS. I mean, there, there really is a synergy between those three where to a lot of people out in the field, that they're seamless. They're, they're, they're one group that's there to support them. And I think that speaks to that bottom-up mentality and also the, I think, the interest that came out of this process that they maintain that relationship is kind of an equal footing and sharing space and, and being a resource to people out in the field.
Okay, follow up to that either for Matt or Brian. So then, do the districts have a direct link to the commission? Or how's that working now?
In a way, so.
Or do they have to go through the administrator to get to the, to the commissioners?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, so the districts, as you can see, actually, in this map, they elect their division representatives. The division representatives have a direct role in selecting the commission. I mean, they're, and then, and they're all one in, often one in the same. You know, if you, if you're on the commission or you're a member of the Idaho Association of Soil and Conservation Districts, you're also in a district and potentially likely in a leadership responsibility in a division. And then that, yeah, the selection process of everybody involved, you know, from the, the administrator of the Soil and Water Conservation Commission and the commission board members is directed by those, those, those groups.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, anything else? Okay, well, whatever we can do to help Director Weaver, let us know as this process moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, Mr. Pat, next up on the agenda is the Anderson Ranch Dam Race.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Cynthia will lead off and then we'll have a report from the Bureau of Reclamation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Yeah, I'm just going to introduce Ryan Alcorn. I don't, I know many of you are familiar with Ryan, but this is the first time we're seeing him appear in person, speaking on this project. So, but he's been working with us closely for a number of months now. but he's been working with us closely for a number of months now, acting Snake River Area Office Manager, and Ryan's going to give us a brief update.
Hey, welcome, Ryan, good to have you here with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and and members of the board, good morning all. Happy to be here. It it may seem a little bit odd with federal workforce being happy to be here, but I am happy to be here, I really am. Just to give you a little bit of background on myself, as Cynthia mentioned, I'm the acting area manager right now. I, my position of record is the deputy area manager, so I am in the Snake River Area Office regardless. I've been with reclamation for over 20 years and spent 11 years of of my career in in South Dakota, in Rapid City, kind of growing up in South Dakota, growing up in Nebraska. Doing this kind of work is is something I love to do, and I I've been in Idaho now for a little over five years and absolutely love Idaho. This is home to me now, and I I really appreciate it, so happy to be here and happy to be in in the role of the acting area manager. Hopefully, that will grow and we'll continue to do this work. So I'm joined today by by Chris Keith, who's on Zoom. Chris would would love to be here in person, typically, Chris is here in person. Fortunately, Chris is actually in Denver right now doing a review C on the 90% design of the Anderson Ranch Dam Raise project. So he's, he's leading a cadre of staff that are doing the review of the design, hopefully getting to 100% design very soon. So with that, our primary focus on today will be an update on environmental compliance, as well as an update on the design and and where we stand currently. So, Chris, if I can turn it over to you, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ryan. Does everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, welcome, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and other board members, thank you for having us today to give you an update. I know the last time we did that was in July, so it's very good to check back in. So as Ryan mentioned, two things I'm going to touch on are some updates with environmental compliance and design. With environmental compliance first, we've got some good news there where we were able to kick off the analysis again. So what this means is we have several subject matter experts that are reviewing and updating the information that was previously published in our draft environmental impact statement. So they're moving along with that. This updated analysis and the NEPA process will enable us to publish a final EIS. We are really paying attention to see how these next few months of work progress to help us nail down the best possible schedule that we can. It is under development a little bit. I think you've heard me say that, the last update, and it still remains that way, where depending on how this next few months play out, that schedule should solidify more and more. Ultimately, we want to publish that final environmental impact statement, you know, as soon as possible. It does appear right now to be in the late 26, early 27 timeframe, but we will continue to check back in with you if that changes one way or the other. So now I will switch to design. You, you heard Ryan mention the dam raise design at 90%. Before I get into that, though, for our work around the reservoir rim, the mitigation that is required because of the additional six feet, we did achieve our 100% designs on that. So we have 100% design drawings and specifications, those were completed in September of 2025. That team, some of them, still, the, you know, the leads for most of their, most of that design do remain engaged in the project and how that coordinates with the dam raise work. So on the dam raise, 90% designs, those were provided in October. That did kick off a very lengthy and in-depth review that started in November, and it's still active, you heard Ryan mention. Several of us are here, meeting with the Technical Service Center experts and going through those 90% designs, the comments, coming up with new comments if necessary, and resolving comments to the best of our ability. That whole process will lead to 100% design, which as of right now is expected by spring of 2026. Another dam raise important step that we were able to achieve these last few months was where we had an independent consultant review board review our designs as they are right now. The, these were a couple of outside dam design experts in their field and really knew what they were doing in terms of a lot of geotechnical engineering and just across the board, what it would take to raise a dam. They did re-do, conduct their review, and they did provide their final report la-last week, so very important step to ensure our designs keep the facility risk neutral post the raised condition. So we definitely want to keep things risk neutral as they are, as they sit today. And to leave you with one last thing here, I've mentioned it, but it's always good to remind that the updates to the the components of what go into our updated total project cost estimate, those are in progress, making those updates, and we still expect to have an updated total project cost estimate by early 2026. And with that, I will go back over to Ryan to close this out.
Awesome, thanks, Chris. Mr. Chairman, any questions or anything for Chris?
Okay, board members, any questions for Chris on his update? Any closing comments, Ryan?
No, I, just in closing, I'll just mention, Chris mentioned the environmental compliance and and hopefully being done late 26, early 27, I, I'll mention on that, the the changes in the environmental regulations that we have had recently allow us to go straight to a final EIS, and we don't, we won't be going out for a draft final, so just for awareness on that, that will speed up the process a little bit, as well as we are working with NOAA and Fish and Wildlife Service on biological opinions, and those are moving forward appropriately and and in good pace. So I'm hopeful that that moves forward quickly, and the design will be done, as Chris mentioned, hopefully this spring, and and we'll be moving completely in the right direction. So appreciate all the work that everybody's doing, Chris, and and the team of designers and and those that are reviewing, doing the environmental analysis and everything, it just, a lot of really good work is happening, and and things keep moving forward. Despite the changes in staff that we've had, we've really, really do have good staff working on this project, so appreciate everybody's work. With that.
Okay, anything else, board members? Okay, thanks, Chris, for weighing in with us and giving us an update. Thank you, Ryan, for being here, glad to have you.
You bet.
And Cynthia, anything else?
I think I'll just close out with chairman by saying that the board will be discussing this topic in executive session tomorrow. From a board staff perspective, we're focusing quite heavily right now on the water right application and resolving protests in that contested case process. Working also very closely with reclamation on the identifying sources of water for mitigation during construction. That's obviously a, an important issue for some of the the protesters and stakeholders out on the, in the basin, so so that work is ongoing as well, and we'll give you some updates on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Thanks, see you, Chris. Next on the agenda, Mr. Patton, Water Supply Bank and Rental Pool Annual Report.
Yeah, Water Supply Bank Report from Mary Condon. What's next on the agenda?
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, director. Someone pull up these materials. If you haven't noticed, there's quite a few. They're covering the annual rental pool reports for years 2023 as well, and 24, as well as the boards bank annual reports for 2023 and 2024. And I'm going to go to the presentation that's included in the materials, it should be on page 56 of your PDF material, 57. If it's not, please let me know. Sorry. Is that correct? The presentation begins on 57? We go, should be sharing.
Really glad we got younger staff that is tech savvy.
Okay, so again, I'm just going to go ahead and summarize operations of rental pools during the calendar years 2023 and 24, and show kind of their rentals for in-basin, out-of-basin, and then how much was used by BOR for flowogue, and then revenue that you received as part of the administrative fees. And then we'll go into a summary of operations for the boards bank during those same years, and we'll cover processing lease and rental applications, the volume rented across the state, and then our finances associated with operations. So this shows a five-year summary of the total volume rented across the five rental pools for years 2019 through 2024. We had a dip in 2022 for overall volume rented, but then you can see in 23 and in 24 for these years recovering, it came back up for a total of 53,000 acre feet rented in 2023 and 59,000 acre feet rented in 2024. Of that, Bureau of Reclamation made up about 70% of that for flowogue. This first table is going to be for Water District 01, Upper Snake, for year 2023. And on the bottom row totals, you can see that they did 290,000 acre feet of lease and rentals for the year. And then total revenue generated for the board was just under $1 million, 925,000. Additionally, for flow from BOR, they did 150,000 of their uncontracted space, or excuse me, zero of their uncontracted, and then 150,000 acre feet from the common pool. Comparatively, in 2024, bottom row totals, 337,000 acre feet were leased and rented through the Upper Snake. And then this is an increase of 40,000, 47,000 acre feet in 24 over 2023. However, however, the revenue that was generated for the board itself was $100,000 less, and this is in large part due to private rentals and their negotiated rates. Additionally, Bureau of Reclamation also did 150,000 from the common pool, and then they did 35,000 acre feet of their uncontracted space. The Boise for Water District 63, just comparisons, top table is 2023, bottom table is 2024. And in 2024, total volume rented was 4,000 acre feet more than 2023, and it generated additional $4,000 for the board's portion. Additionally, summarizing Bureau of Reclamation's for flowogue, with, they had 2,300 rented from out-of-basin and their full uncontracted space in 2023. And in 2024, they increased the out-of-basin common for 2,500 acre feet, and they're full uncontracted, which is typical for their operations for the Boise. The PA for Water District 65, again, comparison of years 2023 to 2024. In 2024, they rented about 500 acre feet more than they did in 2023, but this generated additional $10,000 for the board's revenue. And then the Bureau of Reclamation did not do any common pool rental, but they did rent their full uncontracted space. I, yes. Lake Fork Creek is 65K. And although they have very small rentals in the area, in 2024, they rented 100 acre feet more than they did in 23, and they generated additional $250 for the board's revenue. And finally, we have the Lemhi Rental Pool, Water District 74, and there were no new rental pool leases or rentals recorded or reported for either year. Are there any questions about rental pool reports before I go into the boards bank?
Questions for Mary to this point? I think we're good.
So this is one that internal staff are kind of used to seeing, this shows the basically the backlog of leases and rentals that are pending. So this is everything that we've received in our queue that has not yet been executed or processed out. So the reason why I'm included in here is to show you that you have some peaks and valleys as far as how much processing there is based on applications received and applications processed. So typically, in August, we have our lowest dips, that's when we have most of these processed out the door, we don't have a lot in the queue, whereas we have a huge buildup to December, and that's when we usually have the highest number of applications that have not yet been executed. And this is divided into active lease or lease applications and rental applications. You see lease applications far outweigh the rental applications in the queue. This one you're familiar with, this is our rental applications received by year or by date. And as you're aware, priority processing for rental applications is November 1st. So all applications received for the next year have priority if received by November 1st of the year prior. On the far left-hand side, that's our column where we tally up how many received up to date for the next year by November 1st, 2022, 23, those were our highest years for applications received, and I say, and 22 and 20 and 24 have the same numbers. However, if you'll remember, in 2023, we actually moved 20 applications from 22 to 23 due to a backlog that we weren't able to process at that time. And so that also created a huge increase in applications in holding for 2023 for the November 1st. Notably, our end of month totals were true in the bottom three rows for years 22 through 24 at the very right-hand side. Those are total rental applications received for the entire year. So 2024 was on track to be a really big year, however, we did not receive as many applications during the months of April and after. So we had already received most of our applications by March, and the overall number of applications received in 2024 was only 101. This is our leases and rentals processed annually, so this shows both the years we're reporting on, 23 and 24, as compared to previous years. You can see that there was a large dip in 22, it kind of peaked, raised up a little bit in 2023 as far as overall applications processed, and then it dropped again in 2024. Part of this is because we had less applications received, but also we didn't process all of the applications that we had received. Additionally, only 80% of our applications received in 2022 for rentals were processed in 2022. So volume rented by basin for a five So our volume rented by basin for a five-year average in the map on your left-hand side, it has a color gradient based on the volume rented. Basin two is the middle of the Snake River, and so it's very dark. And for that five-year span, it was about twenty-five percent of the total volume rented. And then you can see some other areas which had a lot of activity are the basins thirty-five, twenty-nine, twenty-one, and seventy-one. And if you're familiar with those, most of these are going to be in eastern Idaho within the ESPA. Now, what we have been delivering to you is volume rented by the water rights rented. So we have rentals within the ESPA that are moving across basins. So what I wanted to do was present to you some additional information on, based on where the point of diversion is, how much activity is there going on? Does that make sense? So on the bottom graph, you can see that American Falls, even though it rented, even though there was ninety-five hundred acre feet rented in twenty twenty-four, there is actually fifteen thousand acre feet that are rented that help make up the total volume diverted in that basin. So additional forty percent of the water that was required in American Falls from groundwater came from other basins within the ESPA. The bar that's on here is number of agreements by point of diversion. The Bigwood River Basin, even though they have one of the lowest volumes rented, they have the highest number of active rental agreements in twenty twenty-four. They had sixty. American Falls, by point of diversion, had forty-five rental agreements. The reason why this isn't typically reported this way is because it's very hard to get to this information. And also, it may have been an oversight in previous years. But I think that it's up to the board to decide how you want to see this information in the future. Would you prefer to get reported on the volume rented by, based on the water rights rented, or by the point of diversion?
That's a really good question. I don't have a really good answer right now, but we probably, we'll get back to you on that.
That, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to provide you that opportunity. The next part of this, we go into the total financial transactions by year. Now, unfortunately, you may notice that years twenty-three and twenty-four have the exact same total operating cost as year twenty twenty-two. That's because in twenty twenty-three, we switched over to LUMA for billing on the personnel hours. And we didn't come out into having codes for hours banked or hours worked for the bank until halfway through twenty twenty-four. I have absolutely no billed hours for bank activity for years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So I have, I, I can't report to you how much it costs to operate the bank in those two years, which is extremely unfortunate.
But give the director our thanks the next time you see him for covering that.
There was no way around it. This is not on.
I, I was looking at you, and then I looked over and seen the director sitting there. Yeah, no, I, I think for the purposes of your report, that it's great just to use the numbers that you know are accurate.
Thank you. So because I don't have a, a good way to estimate how much it costs, because every single variable just affects what we end up costing for billable hours, I went with the highest. I went with twenty twenty-two. However, our actual income received for years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, a lot higher. Our rental rates increased to twenty-three dollars an acre foot, and we also rented more water. However, it wasn't as high as what we would have expected because we also had less lease applications. So in this next chart, we have applications processed on the top and then our finances on the bottom. And on this bottom table, we have revenue received by admin fee for rentals and also revenue received for lease application fees. And you can see in years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that revenue was decreasing. We are getting less lease applications each year.
Join in.
Do you feel that the reason that there's less rentals is because of the price?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cole Hansen. So the, the rentals we are getting, except for in twenty-four, no, I don't think the price has anything to do with the number of rental applications we received in twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, I was not, I thought you were going to ask about number of lease applications received. So I don't think that the price. And as you're aware, in twenty twenty-five, we're also increasing the rental rate fee to the thirty-three dollars an acre foot. And I, and I haven't seen a reduction in the number of applications we received based on that. However, what we have seen is that we had repeat customers who had rented in the past. They had a new rental application that was submitted for twenty twenty-five, and it was presented to them, and they completely balked on the price, and they said, we can't afford this. And they actually asked us to reduce their rentals by half of the amount. But I'm not reporting on twenty-five. That's just to let you know that is what I have seen.
Let answer your questions, Joel.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you. Um, so another trend, just kind of showing comparatively these two different graphs as far as applications processed compared to the revenue received. They follow the same basic trends. The more applications processed, the more revenue we end up receiving. It's also dependent on volume rented. It follows the same trend. The more volume that we end up renting in the top graph, the more, the more revenue that's received in the bottom graph. This is, should be catching up here in a second. There it is. Okay, there was a bit of a lag. So operating costs and revenue, again, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately, I don't have an operating cost because I don't have billable hours to plug into this. I took the same numbers from twenty twenty-two, and I also wasn't, because I didn't have those hours, this isn't a true estimate for the cost per reviewing lease applications, reviewing rentals, managing transactions, or the communications or research and development. These are just plugged in as placeholders. The only thing I do have is revenue received and applications that were processed. And so that information is correct. But anything that I had to use from a previous operating is in a different color font to show that this is just a placeholder because of that unknown. I have two last slides. This first one, this was developed back in twenty eighteen by my predecessor. And what he was aiming to do was to have a target for operating costs and revenue received. And this was for years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. So I have input these numbers each year. And so for twenty twenty-three, we could see that we exceeded the revenue that we were expecting. And then we also, we were less than what the deficit would have been based on using that proxy price from twenty twenty-two. Again, we don't have an operating cost. So unfortunately, I, I can't fill that part in for you. Because I'm staggering across two different years, I went ahead and did out a forecast for years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. Operating costs, I added in a three percent increase per year based on inflation or budgetary increases. We're also going to have more full-time employees dedicated to the bank. So you're going to expect your operating costs will probably be slightly higher because of this. And then we know because we've increased that rental fee rate that we're going to end up having more revenue. And so I went ahead and went with the previous year. I added a little bit and then projected that out for slight increases across each year. This, of course, can be modified by anybody who wants to present this information or report it for you. I thought I would take any questions, sir.
Okay, any questions for Mary? Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, join.
Do you have any recommendations for becoming profitable, might be palatable?
I, recommendations on how to become, like the zero?
Yes, it looks like long-term, we're going to continue to lose money on the board's program.
Right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Cole Hansen. So based on that increase, because I don't have twenty-three and twenty-four, I don't know what the operating cost was. So I started with two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars that proxy from twenty twenty-two, and I added three percent across for that operating cost. So if we come in in twenty twenty-five and operating costs are actually lower, then that may help adjust what your future outlook is. Additionally, in the rental fees, I did not include a thirty-three dollar an acre foot increase on rental fees. I was based on the twenty-three dollars an acre foot from twenty twenty-three, and I slightly increased from there. Because again, as, as I mentioned, some people were uncomfortable with the increase, not a lot. I don't want to imply that we had a whole lot of people who were denying, that didn't want to do rentals anymore. So unfortunately, I, this is more of a, another placeholder. This is, you know, information that you can request, somebody can collect for you and present to you. I, I think that you'll probably hit close to zero for twenty twenty-five once the numbers come in. But I don't have those numbers, so unfortunately, I can't let you know that yet.
Okay, board, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, just would like to recognize Mary is transitioning into another role in the department as a water resource supervisor within the, the Water Project Section. But she's still doing some double duty right now until the department gets a new water supply bank supervisor hired and trained. So as soon as, as soon as a new water supply bank supervisor is hired, we'll make sure that that person is introduced to you.
Okay, all right, good luck, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the Upper Snake Basin Study?
Yes, Amy Castle is on Zoom and will be giving the board a report on the letter of interest that the board submitted regarding a proposed Upper Snake River Basin study to the Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay, welcome, Amy.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. How's my volume this morning?
Sounds pretty good.
Okay, great. So yeah, I just have a quick update for you regarding the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Basin Study for the Upper Snake River Basin. It should, my memo and then the attachment should start on page seventy-nine of board materials, if you'd like to follow along. But the board, at the last board meeting on September twelfth, the board heard a presentation from Michael Hilliard with the Bureau of Reclamation and Shawna Adams from the Minnetoka Irrigation District. That presentation, you may recall, covered, you know, components and requirements of a Water Smart Basin Study, the necessary steps and considerations for a study, and, and they provided some examples of other basin studies and other geographies in the West. Following that presentation, the full board directed the chairman to work with staff to prepare and submit a letter of interest for the Water Smart Basin Study Program. We did submit that, prepare and submit that letter of interest. It's in your board materials, starting on page eighty. It's a three-page letter. It was due October fifteenth, and we submitted it on October fourteenth to Bureau of Rec. And then on October, I'm sorry, on November fifth, we did receive an email from Bureau of Rec stating that our letter of interest was recommended for further consideration and is moving forward in the process. We have not received the official notice. Staff were working on getting, Bureau of Rec staff were working on getting signatures. So we have not received official notice yet, but we, based on the notice to interested parties, the letter that went out, that was dated September second of twenty-five, there are some dates in there, so we have somewhat of an idea of the timeline. Although I suspect with, of course, the federal shutdown, everything will probably get pushed back. But now that we've been selected for further consideration, we will collaborate with Bureau of Reclamation and develop a joint proposal that will not exceed fifteen pages for a plan of study. And then those will then be evaluated and ranked by an independent Reclamation Review Committee. And it sounds like that time period initially was November twenty-five to the January twenty-six timeframe. I suspect everything will get pushed back. But once we get the official notice from, with the signatures from Bureau of Rec, we'll have a better idea of the timeline. So that's really all I have right now for the board, Mr. Chairman. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Okay, board members, any questions for Amy? It, it looks like just about everybody that could send a letter of support.
Yes.
So we were, well, we had a broad spectrum of people supporting our letter. Do you know how many princesses there are involved? And there's only one class slipper, I understand. Is that, aren't they going to do one study this year in depth, or do we know that?
We haven't been told that.
Oh, okay.
But we have been told the budget for the basin studies is a little thin.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we'll just stay tuned then and see when we get further direction from Reclamation. And I assume we're doing some of the drafting of that response to Reclamation now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have not started that yet, but we will just as soon as we know what the timeline be.
Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, I think we're good here, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, administrative rules update.
Eric Bo is here to give that update, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Appreciate the opportunity to give a brief update on our rulemaking activities. So for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six period, this is our fifth and, and final ZBR over the course of the last five-year schedule. As a reminder, we conducted three zero-based reviews this, this year. Two of them were board rules, this is shown Bannock Travel Water Supply Bank rules, and the stream channel alteration rules. The IDBR rules were the Water District thirty-four distribution rules. So following two public meetings, for each rule chapter this summer, I presented proposed rules to Mr. Chairman and board members on August twenty-ninth. And the board signed a resolution adopting the rules on August twenty-ninth and issued that. That allowed us to publish the proposed rules in the October Administrative Bulletin. We didn't receive any comments after, during that advertisement, so we were able to publish the pending rules or the notice of pending rule in the upcoming December bulletin. We issued that, those notices to DFM on November seventh. So they're currently reviewing that. Once published in the December bulletin, then the next step is DFM will work on preparing the administrative rule packets for the twenty twenty-six legislator, legislative sessions, the House and Senate committees, and prepare for our presentations. The session's right around the corner, so we are going to be working next month and getting materials prepared, some handouts we anticipate preparing. And so we'll be well on our way to hopefully get these rules approved. I guess the only other item of interest is we are eagerly waiting for a new ZBR schedule for the upcoming series of rulemakings that we'll have in accordance with Chapter fifty-two of Title Sixty- Uh, in accordance with, uh, uh, Chapter fifty-two, Title Four, uh, sixty-seven. Uh, we'll be reviewing our rules over an eight-year period, and that began this past July first. And so DFM is preparing that schedule for us, and we should hopefully see it in the next month, and we could provide comments on that. That's about where we stand. Happy to stand for any questions, uh, Mr. Chairman and the board may have.
Hey, any questions?
Eric, do you keep a list of running tabulation on the word ZB eliminated?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Member, uh, I do. That is in my other notebook.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't have those numbers offhand, but.
We wouldn't want you to.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we did see some, some solid reductions. I think everybody's going to be happy, and we put together some good rules.
Good work.
Yeah, I think former DFM Director. Adams kept that stenciled on his forehead, that number words reduction statewide, so. Okay, all right, thanks.
Appreciate it, Chairman.
Chairman.
Yeah.
Just on that topic. Want to thank Eric for his hard work. He, of course, inherited this assignment directly from me, uh, and he's done a great job in seeing it out. Uh, we are headed into an eight-year cycle, but we've pushed and said agencies really need a break. So give us a year or two or three before we go back into this. Uh, certainly, we've been of the opinion that there's diminishing returns on a lot of this type of work, and so to quickly revisit it. I'm not sure how effective that would be, and we've at least all characterize Eric's report back to me, there will be a break, but maybe not as long as we would like. But he indicated that that actual guidance and timeline will be coming out here shortly, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Mark.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, uh, what are the status of the Suction Judge Binding Rules? I just ask you on behalf of Director Weaver.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Member Gibbs.
Uh, that's okay.
Okay.
But, but Director Weaver was, you had your job, it came before committing the Resource Committee several times on the Suction Judge Binding Rules, so it's.
Okay.
It's kind of a joke between us. Anyway, I think they're, I think they're finally, you did a good job. They're finally hiring now.
Okay. Perfect.
They were less controversial this go-around than the last two.
I, I, I think a little breather would be, uh, very good. Uh, pretty quick, you're going to be, uh, deciding whether to cross Ts and dot Is. And, uh, so, uh, it's, it's been a good project, but I, I think it's time to give it a rest. Okay, all right, uh, thank you, Eric. Uh, Mr. Patton, uh, Priest Lake Operations.
Yep, um, next we'll have a report on Priest Lake Operations, and I understand this is going to be a tag team between Amy Castle and Michelle Richmond. So I'm not sure who of you is going first.
I, I am simply here to introduce Michelle this morning. Um, she will be giving the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Welcome, Michelle. Nice to see you from up north.
Thank you. Good to be here. I'm going to switch over to share my presentation.
Uh-oh, we may be locking you out. Wes is on the case.
It's not here.
Okay.
There we go. We have it. We've got it now.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Chairman, Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to report on the twenty twenty-five operations at the Priest Lake Dam. Uh, this is actually a presentation that. Uh, we gave to the Lakes Commission and the Priest River Watershed Group in, uh, in November. And I wanted to mention that, uh, Bill Pressy joined Idaho Department of Water Resources in June. As Northern Region Safety of Dams Engineer, and he's been learning and helping to manage dam operations on a daily basis. Uh, I also wanted to mention that the Priest Lake operations in twenty twenty-five. Definitely deviated from how it's always been done, uh, but the goal to implement changes that. Move the system in a positive direction, and we have gotten some positive feedback. From stakeholders this year. The purpose of the talk will be to discuss how we incorporated best practices into twenty twenty-five. Operations, and I'll start with. The operations to manage the lake levels as well as the flow in Priest River during the recreation season. And then I'll discuss the fall drawdown that ended on November first, and specifically, I'll talk about. The cap on outflow during this year's drawdown. And then I will jump in and share some heat that we've received from stakeholders concerning. The operations this year. And I'll wrap up with an update on monitoring efforts underway on Priest Lake tributaries, followed by next steps. So we can't talk about lake operations without talking about statute. And in accordance with Idaho Code seventy dash five oh seven for dry years. We must maintain the lake between three and three and a half feet during the recreation season. And the recreation seasons interpreted to begin on Memorial Day, so our operations. Did bring the lake level up to three feet by Memorial Day. But nowhere in statute is there any mention of anything about flow in Priest River. And other guidance covers that, including the Priest River Basin Plan. So as for the twenty twenty-five lake level for the recreation season. It peaked at three point eight feet on May thirty-first, and we stabilized it to below three point five feet by June fifteenth. And the red bands on the chart mark the three and the three and a half foot lake levels. And by August fourth, we had the lake down to three point three five feet. And that was an important date because from that point on, the lake dropped gradually to three feet. By October first, and that all aligned with the original plan.
Michelle, can, can you tell us what the flow was in the river from mid-August? What, what minimum flow were we able to maintain? With that, uh, extra storage that we captured early in the season?
Lead into this next slide.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry.
The answer is two hundred CFS. Um, so, as for the river. Between May thirtieth and July thirty-first, the natural inflow, it started out at thirty-eight hundred CFS. And came down to three hundred CFS by July thirty-first, so that was a. Uh, one-tenth of what it started at, and that is normal as runoff diminishes. Happens every year, and and during that time, we matched the outflow to the inflow to keep the lake level fairly constant through the end of July. And then getting back to, to your question. For the months of August and September, shown by the green bracket. We switched modes and focused on maintaining the flow in Priest River, and that minimum was two hundred CFS. And while we were holding the river at two hundred CFS, the lake level was allowed to drop due to evaporation and declining inflow. And in contrast, in past years, we would have maintained a constant lake level. All summer by closing the gates down to reduce the flow through the dam, uh, throughout the recreation season. So instead, we let the lake drop gradually while keeping the flow constant. At the two hundred CFS, and by September thirtieth. We had the lake down to three feet. And the Priest River at the dam had maintained that flow of two hundred CFS. Uh, or more through the end of the recreation season, and it was, it's worth mentioning that we did have two significant rain events. And those are shown by the blue dots during summer, and and one was in the end of July and one in the, in mid-August. And those recharge the lake a little, and we release that extra flow after each event. And all in all, the recreation season went as planned, and we received positive stakeholder feedback from. The city of Priest River and from anglers and residents on the Priest River, saying that they valued the higher flow in the river. Um, the, the question does remain, were there any reported impacts to fish? With that two hundred plus CFS going through the dam this past summer, either positive or negative. So in evaluating this year's operations during the recreation season. They successfully maintained more flow in the Priest River, which is especially important in the latter part of summer. When it's typically most difficult to keep flow in the river. And this reduces the likelihood of ditty mo, also called rock snot. From spreading in the Priest River during very mild weather. It's worth noting that this is the first time that the two, two hundred CFS has been maintained through the end of the recreation season. And it wouldn't have been achievable without that extra six inches of gate height. That was recently added by the board. And paired with the statute to allow up to point five feet of water in the lake in dry years. And another point that, uh, the two, is that the two hundred CFS brings us closer to meeting the downstream minimum stream flow. Water rate was held by the board. Um, and that appropriates three hundred CFS in summer for the minimum stream flow. Um, the Priest River, near Priest River Gage, recorded flows hovering. In the two ninety to three hundred CFS range. And, uh, that's compared to past years, that range would have been more like one fifty to one fifty. That was. So within the entire system, there is some give and take, and and holding the lake higher does result in. Some reduction of beach surface area and additional erosion on lake shores. That, um, sums it up for the recreation season, and I'll move into the fall drawdown. And that occurs for the month of October. Um, on October first, we started with the lake level at three feet. And for Idaho code. We, uh, must keep the lake level at point one feet or higher in winter. And as long as we keep that as the minimum lake level, we are complying with statute. It's also important, it's not in statute, but it's important. Uh, per fishing game to complete drawdown by November first, so that openies spawning. On the shorelines of Priest Lake aren't left high and dry. But then, uh, comes the question. Given those dates, how do we accomplish the drawdown? How quickly should we release the lake and what flows are acceptable in the Priest River during the fall release, so. Uh, Priest River Basin Plan gives us a recommendation, and it's based on a study done by Idaho Fishing Game that indicates. A thousand CFS is the maximum flow that should be released during drawdown. And if we look at historic practices. The method has been, over the years, to open the gates, out of, bring the gates out of the water, and then let, let the lake rain on its own. And you can see in the photo that the gates are all out of and above the water, and the lake is freely draining. And this practice has been in place for several decades. And even including through twenty twenty-four. So here's the hydrograph associated with the historic method of drawdown. And again, the gates are just brought out of the water by stepping the flow up, and you can see the stair-step flow on the left side of the chart. And once the gates are out of the water, the lake is draining on its own, and. Using this method last year resulted in a maximum flow of just over twenty-six hundred CFS. So when incorporating best practices into the approach to drawdown. The concept of a capped flow becomes important. And capping the flow allows us to limit the magnitude of the flow in the river. And it slows the drop in the lake level. Um, the original plan we provided in an announcement in August indicated. That the flow would be capped at a thousand CFS. And that would allow us to bring the lake down to about one foot. In past years, the lake has been brought down closer to the zero point one foot level. But in talking with, um. So we made an announcement in August, and in talking with Copper Bay Construction, they gave us some feedback. That indicated that it would be difficult for them to work. On docks and infrastructure in Priest Lake. With a one-foot minimum lake level in winter, it would. Higher than they were, uh, used to working in. So we, uh. Came to that understanding and also saw it as a, a safety consideration. That when docks go into disrepair over, over multiple years, that. They can deteriorate, detach, and become floating debris in the lake and. Eventually make their way, um, into the outlet channel and through the dam. And this is a photo of debris that was, uh, caught. Uh, in the outlet channel in twenty twenty-four by the dam operator. And it was, uh, actually the debris was caught on a rock in the outlet channel, and the operator, Roy Peckham. Anchored the debris to some trees in the channel. You'll see the ropes. Um, background of the photo, and. Once the water level came back in the outlet channel, he floated that debris to the boat launch and pulled it out, and it never did. Make its way all the way to the dam, but it was in the outlet channel. And the dam isn't always that lucky, though, so there is evidence of objects hitting the dam. And with the sunlight shining just right on the gates, you can see the dents in the gates. From objects impacting them. So safety and protection of the infrastructure led to the decision to revise the target minimum lake level from one foot down to point four feet. And to accomplish the lake level of point four feet. We increased the capped flow from one thousand to fifteen hundred CFS. And in the hydrograph, the blue line is this year, and the brown line is twenty twenty-four. And you can see, um, that we trimmed off the peak compared to the historic method. And held a constant flow over a longer duration. And while we didn't meet the thousand CFS cap this year, we did accomplish the fifteen hundred CFS cap. Which is still an improvement over the historical open and drain method. So the, the capped flow approach more closely mimics nature. Uh, relative to the historic practices, and it enables more gradual changes in Priest River flow. So while we remain committed to the concept of the capped flow. We felt it just wasn't safe to implement the thousand CFS cap and the one that went to level this year. So this shows actual lake levels for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and blue is twenty twenty-five. So this shows actual lake levels for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five and blue is twenty twenty five. Brown is twenty twenty four. And as you can see, capped flow keeps the lake level higher for an additional week in October. And the lake level dropped more gradually um than it has in the past, but we didn't meet our target of point four. By November first. And uh some significant rain events played a big part in that outcome. So our minimum lake level did reach point five eight instead of the point four, the target. And Copper Bay Construction indicated that it wasn't ideal, but they would uh work with that level. But the diagram on the left here shows a gradual stepped increase in flow in the Priest River. And instead of increasing the flow to the twenty five hundred CFS or more. Uh through historical practices, we controlled that release with, which is less damaging to the aquatic habitat. And the gradual onset to the drawdown means after a week of drawdown, the lake has only dropped about point five feet. Which using this technique, recreation could feasibly continue on the lake. Into early October. And as for the river, kayakers and boaters can enjoy sustained higher flows. Uh for nearly two weeks in the middle of October, including weekend time. And in contrast, using the historic drawdown methods, the high flow drops exponentially from the twenty five hundred CFS. And that makes timing of ri- river recreation more difficult. Uh, we brought the lake level. Below the one foot mark for dock repairs and safety and the capped method more closely mimicked nature. So just to recap, some of the best practices, uh we held the lake to three to three point five during a dry summer. Maintain the higher flow in Priest River. During the recreation season, limited gate changes to twenty percent of flow during the drawdown. Uh which kept fluctuation down. Uh, we capped flow to protect aquatic habitat and we completed the drawdown by November first and we um. Maintain the lake, winter lake level above the point one. Uh now uh here are the stakeholders that we heard from this summer. And they've been providing pretty helpful information and um good perspectives for consideration. And as you can imagine, some of the requests uh represent competing interests and so our goal. Has been to find solutions that satisfy multiple stakeholders. And request while complying with statute and overarching guidance and really we're just trying to strike the balance between all the priorities. So while this past year, we didn't meet the thousand CFS cap. The first year of what we believe should be an iterative process. Uh to continually incorporate best practices into dam operations. And we believe the thousand CFS is still a good goal to aim for in future years and perhaps it could be phased in over time. Maybe this would require a shift in infrastructure and repair practices. To accommodate the one foot lake in winter. And as operation managers, we've been uh passing. Stakeholder feedback along to Cynthia, Rich Clark and Amy Castle and. Uh, there has been mention of potentially holding a meeting between the board. And stakeholders and um I do think that that would be beneficial. And um now I'll switch gears and talk about monitoring. Uh always behind the scenes, every day we are monitoring all available data to us and that includes. Uh weather reports for precipitation and high and low temperatures and wind. And. We are al- also monitoring the uh three, yes, pages, the one on the lake. The uh, the one just downstream of the dam and the river. And then there's one upstream on the Priest River, upstream on the Ray River. So we're implementing uh also some monitoring on tributary flows into Priest Lake. And we're doing that in cooperation with DEQ and others. And so I have mentioned this before uh that we have no real, real time data available to us. On the inflowing tributaries. So we have the monitoring efforts on the tributaries and you can see in the photo. They uh. We have staff gauge on Granite Creek earlier this summer and we also installed a staff gauge of Upper Priest River. At the road crossing and we have tentative plans to install a data logger and pressure transducer at Hunt Creek. And you may or may not know that the Priest Lake. Have different weather systems from the west side of the lake to the east side and from north to south. Um, in addition to putting staff cages on major tributaries. We also uh hope to install low cost data loggers and uh cellular telemetry. To transmit real time uh gauge data and ideally we're developing rating curves. For these major tributaries and transmitting real time inflow data to inform our daily operation. So here are bar charts of, or a bar chart of the tributaries we measured this year on September twenty ninth and thirtieth. And Granite Creek contributes about forty percent of the inflow. And so it's an important creek to monitor. And the goal is to use the inflow data to become less active when our gate. And less reactive operation directly translate to fewer fluctuations in the lake and the river. Uh due to unanticipated conditions. So changes in weather usually do result in, in conditions that operations must respond to. And having that inflow data would be helpful. So for next steps, we'll continue to gather and consider feedback from stakeholders. And incorporate those into our dam operations as we are able to. And we do believe the operation should be better. Um, and continue to strive for improvements. Uh if the board were to hold a meeting in spring or summer to gather stakeholder feedback. That feedback data would be used to continue to inform twenty twenty six operations and beyond. And uh that's the update I have for you today and. I can take questions if you have time.
Hey, board members, any questions for Michelle?
Uh, Michelle, uh what is the flow in the Priest River right now? Now that the dam has settled out at three point oh.
Today, uh board members, chair, chairman, it's about twelve hundred CFS and it's about to get a little. Higher than that, based on some operations we're doing.
Well, that's a bigger flow for this time of year.
Yeah, there's been quite a lot of rain.
Mr. Chairman. Michelle, this is Al Barker. You showed a slide with the different uh. Uh inflows, uh tributaries that you're monitoring. I was curious, does, when you monitor the inflows, do they um. Jump around so that if there's a, a surge from one. Is also going to be a surge from the others or are they, do they move independently of one another?
Chairman and board member, that is a good question and our. Inflow measurement has been limited to one day.
Okay.
And so we just have a spot measurement and um I believe what you're. Suggesting probably does happen because the weather systems are so different around the lake. Uh, I don't have date, data to support that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Rhino.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Michelle, uh maybe you don't know, but just curious, uh was the, I think it was Sackett property, was that ever developed? With the new quotas decisions or is it still a frog pond?
That I haven't looked up. Um, I believe it was a stream channel violation, is that right? Anyway.
It was a wetlands issue as I recall. Uh, the director's gonna enlighten us.
It's a good question. I can see why you'd ask it based on the presentation. That was way back, so we'd have to go back. I think Stream Channel Alteration Program was involved. I don't know if it ever was an enforcement issue, but. Obviously, it went on to be much more of an issue than that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
One question, I, I don't know if this is for Brian or Michelle. I noticed the dance when they talked about the dance on the front of the uh, our dam, our lovely dam structure we. Worked so hard and paid so much to get. Is, is floating docks that are, that get away, is that, is that a big problem? In the dam?
Is, is it docks or is it just large debris for the most part, Michelle?
Mr. Chairman and board member, I believe that logs are a, a big. Component of the issue, large debris. And I, I see pictures from the dam operator every fall. Uh, it's basically a big pile of large debris that has to be extracted from the river. Um, and it's put on the bank and, and dealt with at that time, but lots of large debris.
Mr. Chairman, those dents are left by.
Okay. I think some of those dents were there prior to the reconstruction of the dam. We did maintain the same gates, so.
Okay, that's a, a lifelong uh collection dance.
Okay, okay, that's all right. So, m- m- Mr. Chairman, as, as Michelle is dealing with um, you know, conflicting uh. Wants from stakeholder input in, in operating the dam, I think she would like a. A little bit of backup, you know, from the board in helping to deal with some of those stakeholder, s- s- some of that stakeholder input. Um, so there's some suggestion that the board may want to hold uh maybe a committee meeting. Um, along with Michelle uh in the basin, you know, to, to gather that stakeholder input. And, and uh work with those stakeholders. Um, maybe it could be one of the board's standing committees or you might, you might appoint uh just a couple of board members as an ad hoc committee. You know, to go work with Michelle on this issue.
Yep, perhaps board members that live in the proximity of. Okay, well, well, Michelle, we'll get something put together for you. I'm thinking maybe we, we would ask. Uh Joanne and Dale to, to work with you along with a- any additional staff that we need uh to have involved. And I, I can see, I, I know that most, most of the homes around Priest Lake are owned by Goldilocks and they want everything just right. Um, and then there are the demands to not have extreme flow changes on the Priest River, so. It, it's a challenge that we're, and I suppose we get to deal with it as a board because we've been given that responsibility. So we'll, we'll help you work through that and uh try and be a little bit of a buffer to help resolve some of that conflict. And I, what, what would be a good timeframe to start this process soon? Uh, before the season starts? Before Memorial Day or what, what do you think, Mr. Patton?
Um, I'm gonna ask Michelle uh what, what she, what her opinion of that question is.
I, I'm sorry, I believe spring, spring might be a good time. It could probably wait until summer as well.
Okay, and somebody just made the comment that uh. Many of those who would like to have input probably don't arrive in the valley until Memorial Day. So maybe a little bit later would let us have a, a, a larger cross section of those that have uh concerns. So maybe we'll shoot for that. If that's amenable to you, we, I, we just don't want to wait too long and, and make it difficult to come up with a. Uh, an operational plan and maybe, maybe this is something that just evolves over a period of time.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Dale.
Uh, Corey Alsasser, he's chairman of the Lake Commission. And he lives on the lower reaches of, of the Priest River. He said this year was really managed really well. Uh, they had good flows in the river throughout the summer. And he didn't hear any bad complaints how the lake was managed. So he was very pleased how everything went on what he was hearing. So uh, this was a good year because I know Michelle mentioned we had some. Rain events uh throughout the summer that kind of helped bring the water back up and. So it kind of went like hog work this year, but that's, that's this year. Every year's a little bit different, so. Uh, yeah, it'd be good to see where everybody's at up there.
Yeah, well, I think this is the first year we've, we've been able to uh. Uh, use the new uh management strategy of surcharging beyond three feet, having that water available and. And it's uh, it's proved to be valuable tool, to have in our toolbox.
Uh Craig Hill, he's uh owner of the, the Hills Resort and he's on the Lake Commission. And he has, he'll be a good uh person to have on any committee, I would say. Cause he lives on the lake up there and works with a lot of the people up there. And he's well liked throughout that community.
Okay, all right, we'll go to work on it, Michelle, and, and keep you appraised of where we're at and if you would do likewise with us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh we are down to non-action items?
We are.
Uh, board members, any non-action items for this work session? And how much time do I need to kill when lunch be here?
Right, five minutes.
Oh, okay, all right, question Dale.
We're gonna bring up our mini schedule?
Uh, that's for tomorrow, yes.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm asking the board, do you have anything else you want to cover in the work session?
You're good?
Okay, I, I think we're good. Uh, Mr. Patton, if you could uh. Uh, give your little cat herding speech.
Yes, sir, uh lunch will be here in about five minutes uh next door. Um, and then we will gather uh downstairs in the parking garage at one o'clock. Uh, to uh drive out to the Nampa Meridian uh Headworks Reconstruction. Um, they're expecting us at one thirty uh on the construction site. And they will give us a tour of what's going on on the construction site. Shouldn't it be a long tour? We should be back here, I'm guessing, two thirty, three P M at the latest.
Is this the one that? Where they're putting the treated water in?
No.
This, oh, this is the one.
Yeah, this is the, the, the Ryden Buck canal head.
This is the diversion dam. Okay, all right, and then tomorrow morning, what, what time one's kickoff tomorrow morning, is it eight or eight thirty?
Tomorrow morning, the kickoff is at eight A M with an executive session.
I know.
Okay, did everybody hear that? Tour this afternoon, eight A M tomorrow morning, we'll have an executive session, we'll take care of the. Uh, board agenda and get Dale on his way.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, since Dale's been here for an extra few days this week, want to get, get him on his drive home.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, all right, um, we were adjourned.